Thank you. Randall Huffman, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. It's not easy to follow a vision with a discussion of balance sheets and tax bills, but I think there's something in this for all of us. I think as we have gone through with the BOC and some of the other committees reviewing aspects of this year's proposed budget, we've been very pleased with the work that has been done, the progress that has been made, and we share in many ways the vision certainly that has been set forth for Greenwich. We approve the tenure CIP process in concept certainly, but at the same time, we have a responsibility as members of the RTM to take a careful look at each aspect of what is proposed, and we believe we must involve the RTM committees earlier in the process, particularly Public Works, Education, Town Services, Finance, as these projects are being proposed, evaluated, and then recommended. We must move to improve our quality control mechanisms for the development and the final realization of these capital projects. We need to have a role in the CIP process. I think there should be members on the CIP committee that are other than just town department heads. I think we are looking toward recommending the development of a standing committee or at least a subcommittee of one of our standing committees to provide an ongoing review, oversight, and recommendation with regard to the CIP projects. And I think we are looking toward the development of a system by which all the major projects, and not just those presently specified in the charter, would have the appointment of a building committee to give a final careful review of the project as it develops. One of the goals here is cost control, because while we have set out a vision for a $300 million capital improvement project for the next 10 years, we know that's really concentrated in the early years. We know that other projects, some of which have already been briefly touched upon, will be brought forth, and while we can look to a tax increase as has been described in the 3.5 percent range for this next year, if we found the kinds of cost increases that we have somehow sometimes seen on capital projects, we would be looking not at a $300 million capital budget, we would be looking at something in the order of $600 million over the next 10 years, and that would require a different kind of tax increase. I think we can do many of the things that have been suggested for the town of Greenwich. I think we have a commitment to renew our infrastructure. I think we have a commitment to develop projects for the benefit of the community. But at the same time, I call to the RTM to fulfill the responsibility you took in becoming a member of the RTM to take an active role in this process so that these projects are properly considered, properly examined, properly reviewed, and properly developed. Thank you.[257.62][257.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Josh Brown, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, my rise to provide some brief information on two fronts. First is on next Tuesday, the 19th, the third of the series of meetings with the selectmen and the BET members to discuss the budget will take place in the Cone Room. It's scheduled at 7:00 PM. All members of the Finance Committee, Budget Overview Committee, all chairmen, and certainly any members of this body are willing, are welcome to come and attend and further understand the key elements of the budget as it comes forward. So next Tuesday, the 19th, in the Cone Room to discuss the '05-'06 budget. I also stand to report on last Monday's deliberations that we had at the Finance Committee, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding the retirement accounts and pension accounts and certain recent reports about some adjustments, ad hoc adjustments that may be considered. We concluded that we were lacking quite a bit of information and needed to look into this and wanted to look into this, and we formed a subcommittee with Pam Fredericks as its lead from District 1, Bob May from District 12, and Tom Broadhurst from District 5. They've spent the last few days collecting information, discussing with various members of the BET, with the Retirement Board, with town government, as to trying to pull together some of the information regarding the Retirement Board and proposed adjustments. The basic conclusion is we need more information and need to further those discussions. We believe that a more broader audience for those discussions should include certainly members of the Retirement Board, members of the BET, the RTM, first selectmen, town administrator controllers, and others to help us understand what is potentially being considered by the Retirement Board and its effect on budget, on the arrangements that we have with our employees, et cetera, and that we'd like that this group meet in the next two months. Our recommendation of this group from the Finance Committee was to you, Mr. Moderator, to appoint a special committee that would comprise itself of members of the Finance Committee, Legislative and Rules, and Labor Contracts, to work with these other areas to better and further understand this topic and to report back either interim or otherwise in June of this year. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I will follow up on that request. I neglected last month to thank the individuals who are responsible for carrying our meetings live on Channel 79, and I want to make sure I don't neglect that tonight. Last month, Paul Curtis and Neil Ritter were the individuals, and this month Jenny Larkin is assisting Paul Curtis. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware. Paul, of course, is a member of District 9. He volunteers his time to do not only our meeting but other town meetings that hopefully some of you are being able to catch for the first times on Channel 79. But to give you an example of the dedication, he has to arrive here at the hall at 5:00 to set up the equipment, and after the meeting, it takes at least an hour to pack everything up. So if anyone has any time to help at the end of the meeting, I just want to express our thanks to Paul and his crew. Jenny Larkin and I, thank you very much for a wonderful job.[496.12][496.12](APPLAUSE). All right, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified the district and committee chairs today that I did intend to designate items to be placed on our consent calendar. I do have one slight change from the notice that I sent around, and that was incorporated in a summary that was handed out to the districts tonight. I intend, based on the reports of our committees and districts, I intend to designate the following eight items for our consent calendar. And if there is no objection, we will not hear committee reports or any debate on these items. So the first of the items put on the consent calendar is item number seven, which is the nomination of Mary Bausch to be a member. We would act to appoint her as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2008. That's item seven. The next item is item eight, the appointment of Catherine Brennan to be a member of the Commission on Aging with a term expiring March 31, 2008. The third item is item nine, the appointment of Lori Jackson as a member of the Commission on Aging, term expiring March 31, 2008. Item 10, the appointment of Marilyn Ross Kahn as a member of the Board of Health, term expiring March 31, 2008. The fifth item is item 12, the appointment of Susan McNeely Craig as a member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring March 31, 2008. Item 13, the appointment of Paul Hopper as a member of the Historic District Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2010. Item 16, I did have item 15 in today's notice, that has been removed. The next item is item 16, the appointment of Joan Murphy as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2006. And the last of the items that I am designating for the consent calendar is item 20, which is a resolution accepting as a public highway the private road known as Hooker Lane, also known as Hooker Lane Extension. So I am hereby designating those eight items for our consent calendar. Are there any objections to those designations? Mr. Von Kaiserling, District 8.
Point of information on the last item, Hooker Lane, discussion among members of our district that that may be an inappropriate name for Greenwich and its image. You're only challenging.[688.23][688.23](LAUGHTER).
I don't think the mics picked that up, did they? Further, are there any objections to the designations of those eight items? All right, hearing none. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Now, we are voting on those eight items. If you are in favor, you should vote yes as the card comes around. Please mark your voting cards, consent calendar, items 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 16, and 20, and proceed to poll your delegation. With respect to the remaining items, based on the recommendations we received, I will suggest a motion to combine the following four items, items 1, 4, 5, and 15. And the change from this morning's notice is that item 15 came from the consent calendar to the combined items, and I am not including item 14 for reasons which will be explained as we take that item up. So at the appropriate time, I will recommend a motion to combine items 1, 4, 5, and 15, which would leave as separate items 2, 3, 6, 11, 14, 17, 18, and 21, item 19 having been withdrawn. Okay? Is that clear? Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining items 1, 4, 5, and 15 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 1, 4, 5, and 15 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining items 1, 4, 5, and 15 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. So item one of the combined items now comes before us. Marcos Madrid, Director of Public Works, Commissioner of Public Works.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, and guests, item number one, resolve that the sum of $668,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the general fund account numbers to the seven accounts as listed in the call. Further resolve that the sum of $66,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the parking fund account to the three accounts listed in the call, and further resolve that the sum of $67,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the leased railroad fund account number to the two accounts as listed in the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee took up this item last Monday with 11 districts present in voting. We're missing District 3, who is doing, I think it was triple duty that night. Presenting was Mr. Madrid, the Commissioner. He effectively covered the materials that were laid out in the explanos quite well. Didn't really want to focus too much, except to bring focus on two items which our committee understood was the need to restock the supplies that are used in previous years. We keep on drawing from this stockpile of supplies, and it's now getting lower and lower, and so in this request, we're re-upping that level back to its levels where it should normally be as full. And so we are approving of that. Secondly, asking Mr. Madrid to look at the rolling average that they use to project the snow accumulation, because the last four years have definitely swung the trend in an upwards manner, but the trend that he's using doesn't necessarily reflect much increase or much difference. And so we had suggested that maybe they want to take a look at coming up with another trending model that might be in shorter duration, not creating wild swings, but certainly more reflective of current experience. With little further discussion on the item, we were 11 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining in favor of the item.
Thank you. Robert Cavie, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
The Public Works Committee met on Monday night and doesn't have too much to add to that discussion. We voted 10 in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. District 1 absent. District 2 was attending another meeting and gave no vote on this item.
Thank you. Discussion on item one. Item four now comes before us. Dr. Susan Wallerstein of the Greenwich Public Schools.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item number four is a substitute resolution, resolve that the Board of Education be authorized to accept $36,382 from the Greenwich Education Association, and that these receipts be appropriated and added to account A620153251020 for a teacher's salary.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. Mary Jacobson with the report of our Education Committee.
The Education Committee took up this matter on Monday, April 4. Sue Wallerstein presented, and the payment of $36,382 represents reimbursement by the Greenwich Education Association to the school district for the teacher's salary in order to pay for the cost of a replacement teacher for the .8 full-time equivalent leave of the association president, and the vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, this item was not given to the Finance Committee, but since we had Dr. Wallerstein discussing a couple of other items, we took the opportunity to raise question as to the appropriateness of the resolution. The substitute that Dr. Wallerstein presented was, I guess, the endpoint of our deliberations, which included the acceptance of the monies as well as the appropriation. We took no vote as we didn't quote-unquote formally take up the item, but succeeded in getting the right appropriation there.
Thank you. Discussion on item four. Item five now comes before us. Once again, Dr. Wallerstein.
Item five, also a substitute resolution to correct some account code numbers, resolve that the town of Greenwich accept a grant for $6,000 for Project Evolve, a federally-funded special education initiative based at the University of Vermont. Said amount be and is hereby appropriated to the following accounts, $1,500 to account A620056851060 Cos Cob School, $3,000 to account A620106851060 North Myannis School, and $1,500 to account A620036851060 Glenville School.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Mary Jacobson with the report of our Education Committee.
This item authorizes the Board of Ed to accept grants from Project Evolve, a federally-funded special education initiative. The purpose of the project is to identify and disseminate information about best practices in the use of paraprofessionals serving students with disabilities. The funds will be used for professional development materials and supplies. $1,500 has been received for Cos Cob School, $3,000 for North Myannis, and $1,500 is anticipated for Glenville School. The Education Committee voted 12-0-0 on this item.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Item 15 now comes before us. Ed Gomo, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, item number 15 is the substitute resolution, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Mary A. Knight.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Substitute resolution on item 15 has been moved and seconded. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Hi. The Appointments Committee agrees with the substitute resolution. This is calculated on the basis that Mary Knight is filling the position vacated by Paul Hopper, which expires 2010. Except for the error in the term's expiration date, everything in this resolution is in order. The leading qualification of this nominee is that Mary Knight is a resident of the Strickland Road Historic District. The Historic District Commission feels that it is generally advisable to have a resident as a member of their board or their commission in order to be a better liaison between the commission and the neighborhood in which the district is found. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the town meeting, we met, the Land Use Committee met with Mary Knight at our meeting last Monday evening. Before reporting on item 15, I would simply like to report that in addition to considering the items referred to us in the call at our meeting last Monday evening, we elected a new vice chair to replace Elizabeth Galt-Hirsch, and the new vice chair of the Land Use Committee is Peter Basilewski of District 8. As to item 15, as Ms. Jenkins indicated, she is a resident of the Historic District on Strickland Road. The house that she lives in is apparently placked as having been built in 1792, although she thought it was probably more likely that it was built in the 1830s. It is, in any case, one of the older houses in the Historic District, and she is, we talked to her a good bit about it, she's quite proud of it, and has had some work done on the house, which is intended to keep it in keeping with the historic nature of the house. Her current business, her career, is as a teacher at an exercise studio, and her background is in the fashion area, although she had a degree in English literature at college. Because of this background, perhaps, the district for the resident, sorry, tongue-tied tonight, the delegate from District 1 voted against this nomination on the ground that she didn't have the background qualifications for the position. However, our vote was 11 in favor, with just that one vote abstaining. Opposing, she does sit on this committee by virtue of her residence in the Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 15. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined items 1, 4, 5, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on our consent items. Those were items 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 16, and 20. Those in favor, 177; opposed, 1; abstaining, 0. Those items have carried. That now brings us to our separate items, and I'd like to just alert you to something about the last item on our agenda, which is the petitioner's sense of the meeting resolution. That is item 21 regarding Nathaniel Witherell. First of all, there are speaker sign-up lists. There is a list up front here, and there were two sheets placed at the entrance to the auditorium. So I encourage any interested speakers to put your name on that list. That will be the last item that we come to tonight. One other thing about that item. One of our committees, Legislative and Rules Committee, intends to move to postpone that until October, and I informed Doug Wells, the chair of that committee, that I cannot accept that motion as it is not permitted under Robert's rules. A motion to postpone an item cannot carry the item that far into the future. So I want to alert everyone to that possibility. All right. Item number two now comes before us. Marcos Madrid, Commissioner of Public Works. Mr. Von Kaiserling, please state your point of information.
On the sign-up sheet on turf, because there are only two options allowed, you either speak for or against the item, there is no, you know, either for town ownership or not town ownership and governance. There are three points of view that are presently out in the public, as you well know. There also is a motion to postpone, which you feel is not in order, but there certainly seems to be a very large feeling among the body that a postponement of this, this is not a timely motion before.
All right, Mr. Von Kaiserling, that is, Mr. Von Kaiserling, I've heard what you have to say, and you no longer have the floor. We will address item 21 when we get to it. Okay? Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Von Kaiserling, please sit down. We are taking up item number two. You can put another column and say that other. Commissioner Madrid.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, I have a substitute resolution for item number two, resolve that the town of Greenwich accept the gift of 20 streetlights for installation on Greenwich Avenue with an approximate value of $60,000 from Greenwich Green &amp; Clean.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The substitute resolution on item two has been moved and seconded. Mr. Cavie with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works Committee met on Monday night. We were assisted by Joe Roberto. The price from the power company, Northeast Utilities, includes the wiring installation costs of these posts. The fee is for these designer poles, but the utility owns the poles and charges a monthly fee, a lease, which includes, I guess, the use of power, but also the maintenance of the poles. The vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, with Districts 1 and 2 not voting.
Thank you. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met with 11 districts present in voting. We're missing, again, District 3. We had Mr. Madrid discussing this item. It's requesting the acceptance of the gift of the 20 light poles. The lights will be acquired by Greenwich Green &amp; Clean and given to the town in an installed state. CLMP or Northeast Utilities will be removing the existing light poles and installing the new one. The cost to be included in the gift. Any alterations that are required to be made will be made by DPW, and that's to the base itself, to the pad or the platform, and Mr. Madrid indicated that he had money in his maintenance budget to fix those things that need to be fixing. We had quite a bit of discussion just regarding the amount of need to be fixing. We had quite a bit of discussion just regarding the amount of lighting that these new light fixtures will produce. As to spacing and sufficiency, Mr. Madrid is, you know, pleased and feels comfortable that the light is fair. We would suggest that the town look at establishing certain standards or adopting certain standards for Greenwich, certainly not that we need the illumination of a major metropolis area, but reflecting upon the nature of the town. We also discussed the resolution. Mr. Madrid presented a substitute, which, again, we helped focus the language to the acceptance of the light poles and not the $60,000, which had been the means of which, or the manner in which it was originally presented. With further little discussion and anticipation of the substitute resolution, the Finance Committee voted 11-0-0 in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item two. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number two. Item three now comes before us. Commissioner Madrid.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, item number three, resolve that James A. Lash, first selectman B., and hereby is authorized to execute such agreement, having been entered into pursuant to Section 7, 273 of the Connecticut General Statute entitled "Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Stamford, Connecticut and the Town of Greenwich, Connecticut for Sanitary Circumstruction, Connection, sorry, for Six Stamford Property Owners on Hillcrest Park Road."
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. Linda DeScife with the report of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Robert Combe, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, and Mr. Philip H. Bartel, Special Counsel to the Town for the Myana Sewer Project, explained this item to the committee. This sewer project was initiated following investigation by the Conservation Commission in 1992 of fecal coliform bacteria contamination in the North Myanis area. The project was expanded to include the Greenwich residents on Hillcrest Park Road, which is a private road on which the property owners on each side owned to the middle of the road, and an easement to permit construction of the sewer down the middle of Hillcrest Park Road was sought from the six Stamford families who reside on the east side of the road. They also asked to be hooked up to the sewer, giving rise to the need for an agreement between Greenwich and Stamford to permit Greenwich to collect applicable fees and/or taxes for the sewer service. Unfortunately, it has taken more than two years from the time that our Board of Selectmen gave approval to this agreement in October 2002 to reach agreement with Stamford, and the project has been finished with the exception of hooking up the six Stamford families who have individually given their contractual undertakings to pay for the sewer service through a separate sewer agreement dated April 1st, 2005. During our review, it was learned that adding six Stamford homes will not result in any Greenwich residents being denied the opportunity to hook up to the sewer. The project added capacity for 2,000 homes, of which 36, including the Stamford six, are being added. Secondly, there is a requirement in the individual undertakings for P&amp;Z approval should any Stamford owner wish to subdivide his property in this RA1 area. Thirdly, this is not the first interlocal sewer agreement. Another exists between Greenwich and the Village of Portchester, covering New York residents near Comley Avenue in the Pemberwick area. The chairman of the committee inquired whether the RTM is also giving municipal improvement approval if the vote on the item carries. The committee voted 8-2-1-1 to refer that process question to the Law Department without the answer affecting the committee's vote on the item. The committee then voted on the substance of the item, 10-1-0-1. The delegate from District 11 was absent, and the delegate from District 12 voted no because he was concerned about liability issues. Mr. Bartel subsequently contacted the chairman to say that he had discussed the municipal improvement question with Ms. Amina Ahmad of the Law Department, and she had conveyed to Mr. Bartel's the view of Mr. Wetmore that the RTM is not considering the MI question, which has already been granted by P&amp;Z.
Thank you. And our own left-hander, Dee Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took up this item last Monday evening. The following people provided information to our committee: Bob Combe and Marcos Madrid from Public Works, Attorney Philip Bartel, Special Counsel to the Myana Sewer Project, and Bob Tuttle, appearing in his role as a member of the Condemnation Commission. Mr. Combe first provided us with the same historical perspective that you just heard from the previous speaker. I won't go into that since it's been adequately covered. We then heard from Attorney Bartel, who provided us with the detailed description of the interlocal agreement, and also discussed the sewer agreement that he has reached with the six property owners on behalf of the Town of Greenwich. This sewer agreement was circulated to our committee members and was prepared and executed by the homeowners in the three weeks since the planning and zoning meeting on March 15, when there was concern expressed that there was nothing in place to know how the homeowners would be assessed. Excuse me. The sewer agreement provides that notwithstanding the fact that the properties are mostly, or in one case at least, completely in Stamford, they will nevertheless pay full freight for the hookup fees and the sewer use charges after the hookup. Attorney Bartel has also explained that the agreement provides that Stamford homeowners acknowledge and understand their entitlement to hook up to the town sewer system does not entitle them to any other benefits from the Town of Greenwich. Also provides that if additional residential or commercial units are built on any of these properties on the Stamford side, there could be no further hookups, notwithstanding that fact. And finally, there was a considerable discussion in our committee about exactly how the formula for assessing these properties would work. Mr. Tuttle told us that the Condemnation Committee was going to establish the sewer use charges based on a blend of the assessment of value from the Stamford Assessor's Office for the property that is on the Stamford side, and that value would also be affected by the Greenwich assessment. There was some concern in our committee that because the Stamford realty is likely to be assessed less than comparable Greenwich property, that these six homeowners would be using our sewers at less cost than Greenwich residents. Mr. Tuttle said that it was the intention of his commission to ensure that there be a fair assessment, but that is a work in progress. Our committee took two votes, first as to legal order. Our vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. We then voted on the merits. Our vote in that case was 10 in favor, none opposed, one abstention. District 10 was absent for those votes.
Thank you. Mr. Cavie with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Yes. This entire project originated with environmental concerns for the Myanis River watershed. The area in question, Hillcrest Park, part of Hillcrest Park and the eastern part of Hillcrest Park, and certainly the Stamford houses, are not, are quite remote from the Myanis River watershed. There is mention that the Stamford houses pitch towards the Greenwich side, but if that was a criteria for sewer-ing maps, almost every house pitches to every other house in some way or other. That was never a criteria previously. Problems with sewers, problems with effluent, but not pitch. All right. The interlocal agreement on the RTM call is after the fact. It has become increasingly common for public works projects to proceed without their prerequisite approvals. In September 2000, the RTM approved item eight, which extended the sewer boundary map to include the, in quotes, "Hillcrest Park Pocket." The map attached to the explanatory comments for that approval did not include the trunk line on Hillcrest Park Road south of Norton Lane, that is, south of 25 Hillcrest Park Road, south to Palmer Hill Road. Without RTM approval of this extension, and without the required interlocal agreement for inclusion of the six non-resident Stamford homes, the trunk line and associated connection stubs were installed during the period September 2001 to May 2002. In late 2002, Philip Bartel's Special Counsel and member of the Myanis Millbrook Sewer Task Force authored the first drafts of what is now the interlocal agreement. He had also authored the Portchester Agreement in 1977, I believe. Apparently, little progress on the agreement took place during the next two years. Parts of the current agreement, which define the obligations long since fulfilled of the Town of Greenwich, by the Town of Greenwich, are written in the future tense, what the Town of Greenwich will do. It's done then. At the time of submission to this call, a key element of the agreement was defective. The non-resident Stamford homeowners had merely agreed to reach a mutual agreement with the Town of Greenwich on their financial obligations. On April Fool's Day of 2005, the homeowners of the benefiting properties executed an extensive 20-page agreement. This document clarified their understanding of their obligations and limitations. This document was mailed to the chairs of the RTM committees assigned to consider item three on the call. It was not distributed to the general membership of the RTM. In an effort to equalize fees charged to both non-residents and residents, an artificial assessed value was created upon which to base both sewer improvement and sewer maintenance, that is, use charges. These assessments will likely result in lower fees to Stamford residents than the fees charged to comparable residents assessed by the Town of Greenwich standards. It is alleged without substantiation that the annual bonded improvement charges will only be modestly below Greenwich resident charges. However, the annual sewer maintenance charges applied to all residents in the sewer district are directly proportional to assessed valuations. All this having been said, the RTM Public Works Committee voted nine in favor, none opposed, with districts four and 12 abstaining, and District One absent on item three, as it appeared in the call.
Thank you. Discussion on item three. Mr. Banbrick, District 12.
Colleagues and guests, I'd like to address another option for sewer-ing of the six homes that are in Stamford. This is a map that I obtained from the Stamford Record Center, and it shows the Greenwich-Stanford border with five of the six homes that want to connect up to a sewer system. Over here is our sewer system, extended past Norton Drive, as just described. In Stamford, there's a trunk line that starts here, about 100, 150 feet from this house in Stamford, and over on Palmer Hill, extended up to the Edge Hill home, there's another trunk line. So it's totally feasible that these Stamford properties could connect up to the Stamford sewer system. And I think the driver for that has to do with, in my mind anyhow, the liability issue. As the ILA is written, Greenwich is the active ingredient in the ILA, and Stamford is passive. What I'd like to see is an inversion of that relationship so that Stamford becomes the active partner, and Greenwich becomes the passive one, and I think that would minimize liability. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on item three. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number three, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on our combined items. Those were items one, four, five, and 15. Those in favor, 180; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. Those items have carried. That now brings us to item number six. Dr. Susan Wallerstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item number six, resolve that the sum of $390,000 be and is hereby appropriated to be added to the following accounts: $138,410 to account Z6800292595625109, $182,668 to account Z6800292595625063, $68,922 to account Z6800292595624106. Said appropriation to come from the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. Mr. Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met on Monday with 12 districts present in voting on this item. We had Dr. Wallerstein, and she introduced Anthony Byrne, who's the new Director of Operations, to us. The history of this is included in the discussion and decision to use operating funds regarding a project that needed to proceed expeditiously in order to move the students from HAMAV into temporary quarters. She discussed that in the original appropriations, there was effectively no contingency in the original request, that the town agencies that had reviewed the plans had made certain requested enhancements or modifications to those plans, and also identified a certain portion of this additional appropriation could or should have been included as part of the bidding processes. And so we have a need to fund work that had to be done, that there was, you know, no monies for. We reviewed the cost sheet that was included in the explanatory comments. We had some issues with trying to make the numbers jive between which was, what was in the explanatory comments to what was in the item on the call. Dr. Wallerstein did indicate that there was a lowering of the temporary space costs that accounted for about $100,000, and certain other minor changes of $7,000 or $8,000 that got us to at least understand what the numbers were supposed to be. We also felt in our deliberations that the explanatory comments, considering the history that this project has gone through, was a bit on the light side, and some more information could have been forwarded as part of the explanatory comments to help us in our deliberations. We are also concerned regarding the deliberations and discussions that had taken place in January, where recognizing the urgency of the need to move into the temporary quarters, that monies be taken from the operating funds to continue the building process, and that at some later date or time, the Board of Ed would come back to the RTM to replenish those funds and to do a full accounting. We were concerned as to that process. We would expect that certainly emergencies where there's, you know, health issues, public health issues, would be ones in which, you know, actions like this would normally be taken. Had a brief conversation with the town attorney, who seemed to affirm that those would be the accepted routes to use this kind of a process. We also know that in last month's RTM meeting, an item was presented to us on the floor that we were able to vote upon, take it up, and deliberate and discuss, and feel that we should not, you know, cut ourselves short of not using that in the future, that if there is a matter of great urgency, at least being able to present it on the floor, having emergency committee meetings, you know, right before the RTM, you know, should be considered. And certainly, the building project for HAMAV, at least from our committee's perspective, would be qualifying for that kind of focus, and we would rally to support the students and to the teachers and parents so covered. We also, in our discussions, affirm that Dr. Wallerstein is responsible for overseeing the budget for these projects. Certainly, she's transitioning and taking on, and certainly Mr. Byrne now is taking on the review of those projects, and look forward that we hopefully won't be seeing more of these items in the future. She did indicate that she didn't believe that, at this point in the game, there would be anything forthcoming as it related to the temporary quarters for HAMAV. So our concern was, again, some of the process. So our concern was, again, some of the process, some of the information that didn't tie out was a concern to us. We do believe, however, that the project was essential to move forward. We also understand that there will be a full accounting and audit of invoices that we'll expect to be reimbursed that went into or need to be recovered into the operating accounts to ensure that only those appropriate expenses will be transferred and covered by this appropriation. With further discussion on this, we had a vote of 12 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining. In our deliberations, we also took up the question of the project manager. Our concern is that this is the same project manager that is going to be overseeing the police building, the police facility, and that it appears that there might have been gaps in what was being planned for and covered by the appropriations and plans previously submitted for the temporary headquarters or temporary space for HAMAV, and that serious look at the actions of the project manager should be done as we move into the police facility. Our vote on this item, again, was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mary Jacobson with the report of our Education Committee.
The Education Committee took up this matter on Monday, April 4th. Originally, the RTM appropriated $3,474,176 for Hamilton Avenue School, which included $425,353 to Darian Asphalt, $2,498,823 to CBSI, $550,000 to URS. The cost overruns of $490,000 constitute approximately 15% of this amount. The original appropriation has been exceeded for a variety of reasons, including not filing permits in a timely manner, which resulted in delays, not being aware that the site posed problems for construction because of rock ledge and cobble, and these adverse soil conditions resulted in increased cost and delays due to drilling, additional excavation, rock removal, and restoration. Omissions in the original budget for items including utility connections, data services, additional child-sized toilets replacing incorrect adult ones, sinks, water coolers, among others. No contingency funds in the budget. In addition, personal turnover at URS has contributed to less than satisfactory oversight management of the project. The Board of Education proposes to pay all of these costs using $390,000 in this appropriation and absorbing $100,000 in other accounts. The vote of the Education Committee was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Three. Bob Brady, District Five. Pardon me? Oh. What did I say? Oh, okay. I have the vote on Item Three. Discussion on Item Six. Mr. Brady?
Good evening. I was out of town last week, so I missed all the committee discussions and district discussions on this item. I did, however, attend a January 18th meeting held by the Board of Education, and attended by the First Selectman, Mr. Tessie, other members of the BET, members of the Board of Education, members of the finance staff in town, Mr. McLaughlin of the Law Department, the moderator pro tem, and a representative of the Finance Committee. At that meeting, a two-part recommendation, well, first, the Board of Ed discussed the overrun and the problems that gave rise to it, which were pretty much as you heard from Mr. Brown and Ms. Jacobson. There was a two-part recommendation. First, because the January RTM had already gone past, was to fund the project from existing accounts, and when the project was completed, prepare an accounting, come back to the RTM, and get reimbursement, which is what's before us now. But the second part of the recommendation, the second part of the track, has not been, in my opinion, honored. And that was to negotiate a settlement with URS in which URS ate a substantial part of the overrun. That has not occurred. What the Board of Ed has proposed, take all the change orders that have been put forward and pay them, $390,000 of new money, $100,000 from whatever accounts they're going to absorb them in. And given the performance of URS in the project, I think it's appropriate that we redirect the Board of Education's attention to that second track, which was to negotiate a settlement which included a substantial contribution to the project by URS. Consequently, I rise to propose an amendment to this resolution to reduce the Item Six appropriation by $200,000 from $390,000 to $190,000. The account allocation to be determined by the Board of Education.
Thank you. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to amend Item Six to reduce the amount of the appropriation by $200,000 so that the new appropriation would be $190,000. Discussion on Mr. Brady's motion to amend. Dr. Wallerstein, would you care to comment? I mean, you don't have to. I just, you understand that we're about to vote on a motion to reduce this.
Since this is new information this evening, what I would like to offer for your consideration as you look at this amendment are two things. One is, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Brady's analysis, and would suggest that we, in fact, the Board of Education or the school system does fully intend to engage in negotiation with URS to recoup funds that we believe had to be expended, excuse me? I'm sorry. That they had to be expended. The motion that you are being asked to vote on tonight, which is to appropriate the $390,000 to those accounts, should not, from my perspective, presume that those funds, in fact, are going to be paid to URS. However, we are legally obligated, as we have gone through the process of, with the good cooperation from the Department of Public Works and the Law Department, and planning and zoning, among others, to secure, as of today, what looks like the certificate of occupancy to meet the needs of the children. We are obliged to not spend money that we don't have in the bank. So our goal was to get the CO and to get the students relocated before we began the negotiation with URS, as described by Mr. Brady. Again, what I fully concur with. So I would respectfully request that, to allow us to proceed with that negotiation process with the understanding that the original motion on the table for $390,000 does not, in fact, presume that those funds will be paid to URS pending further negotiation. And as Mr. Brady said, the funds would not be appropriated to anyone without the Finance Department of the Town of Greenwich reviewing any and all requests for payment that come along. So that's my explanation.
Thank you. Further discussion on Mr. Brady's motion to amend Item Six. Joan Caldwell, to be followed by Randall Huffman.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. I was there when Mr. Brady made the suggestion that we kind of negotiate with URS, and I may be missing something, but why are we appropriating $390,000 if the Board of Education is going to negotiate that down? Because once we appropriate it, it's gone.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Randall Huffman.
I rise in support of Bob Brady's amendment. I think here we have in microcosm some of the items that we've really been talking about, and I think it is time that we take a stand. If, after they have done a good-faith negotiation with URS, and they have come to a reasonable settlement, they can come back to us if they need an additional balance at that time that is justifiable. So I would support this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. All right. We are now voting on whether to reduce the number in Item Six from 390,000 to 190,000. We are not now voting on Item Six. This is simply a motion to amend. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Brady motion to amend Item Six. And poll your delegation quickly, as we will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding further with a vote on Item Six. While we are waiting, I have the results of the vote on Item Two, which was acceptance of the streetlights on Greenwich Avenue. From Greenwich Green and Clean, those in favor, 174; opposed, 5; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. I have the results of the vote on Item Three, which was authorization to enter into the inter-local agreement with the city of Stanford. Those in favor, 136; opposed, 31; abstaining, 13. That item has carried also. All right. Is there any further discussion while we're waiting for the results of the vote on Mr. Brady's motion to amend on Item Number Six? All right. Keep in mind, Item Twenty-One, which is our last item, there is a sign-up list for speakers, both outside the auditorium and at the front here. All right. We have the result of the vote on Mr. Brady's motion to amend Item Six by reducing the appropriation from $390,000 to $190,000. Those in favor, 157; opposed, 24; abstaining, 0. That motion to amend has carried. So we now have before us an amended Item Six with a reduced appropriation. Further discussion on Item Six.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I've been in the town meeting long enough to have seen a number of cases in which money was spent before we authorized it. So to me, that's nothing new. We get upset every time it happens. What I was disturbed at this time is when I read the explanatory comments, and the explanatory comments stated that several meetings were held in January with members of the BET and the RTM. That explanation says to me that the Board of Ed felt they had the tacit approval of the town meeting to go forward with this, based on the fact that there were RTM members present at those meetings. I want to make clear to my fellow members, and I've discussed it with the moderator, that there is only one group that is authorized to speak on behalf of the town meeting, and that's the Claims Committee. We spelled that out in our rules. No other member of the town meeting is authorized in any way whatsoever to speak for all of us. The only time we can act is when we act as a town meeting. I directed a phone call today to Mrs. Wallerstein from the Board of Ed. Didn't have a chance to talk with her, but have since discovered some of those members who were present. I am not saying that they necessarily implied to anyone that they were speaking for the town meeting, but as I read the explanatory comments, I definitely got the sense that the Board of Ed, in its explanation, is implying that they had our tacit approval. So I want to make clear to all departments that just because you've had town meeting members present, that does not authorize an appropriation. Only the full town meeting can do that.
Let me just follow up to that. When I received a report of the meeting that took place, I had a similar concern, and immediately informed the superintendent and others that if a special meeting of this body was required, I was prepared to call one. So the message went out clearly at the time that there was no authorization on behalf of the RTM, which can only speak at a duly noticed meeting. All right. Further discussion on Item Six as amended. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item Six as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item Eleven now comes before us. Ed Gomo, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, Item Number Eleven is a substitute resolution resolved that the following named person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed for a member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2008, Kimberly Ternorri.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The substitute resolution on Item Eleven has been moved and seconded. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee agrees with the substitute resolution that Kimberly Ternorri is for the Board of Social Services, not the Board of Health. Ternorri has a bachelor's degree in industrial engineering and a master's of business administration from the University of Chicago. She has work experience in corporate finance and community service ties through the Junior League projects. The Appointments Committee found her skills will be particularly useful in measuring the delivery of social services in the town of Greenwich. Our vote was 11-0-1. The one vote, which was an abstention, was concerned that with this appointment... The one vote, which was an abstention, was concerned that with this appointment to the Board of Social Services, the members of the Board become ever increasingly financial-driven and not mission-driven. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda DeScife with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Ms. Taranoyar, who is experienced with outcomes-based budgeting and strategic planning, makes a very favorable impression and handled a variety of questions forthrightly and skillfully. The overwhelming majority of the committee's members thought her to be well-qualified. Our vote was ten in favor, one opposed, zero abstaining, and District Eleven absent. The delegate from District Eight, who is an employee of the Department of Social Services, voted no because he thinks that there should be a trained social worker on the board.
Thank you. Discussion on item eleven? Mr. Edwards, District Eight.
the Health and Human Services Committee, as well as having worked Department of Social Services for twelve years. I feel it's a harmony of interests, not a conflict of interest, for the following reasons. Though the proposed candidate is extremely well-qualified, the question is qualified for what? I think we have to look at what the purpose of the Board is, what the needs of the Board are, and that was my concern. I also raised a question about the Selectmen's Committee really trying to vet potential nominees to better serve the Boards. We very carefully, seemingly, make sure that the Department or the Board of Health has a few doctors on it. Seems natural. We have Boards that have required engineering understanding, so we have a few engineers. And yet somehow magically, we think that understanding the serious needs of about ten percent of our population, town of Greenwich is about sixty-one thousand, according to the census, it's about six to eight thousand people are in a disadvantaged category. And so we somehow seem to take this area a little more lightly. Right now, given the very serious situation that's happened in the Department of Social Services, where now the town has taken upon itself to bring outside consultants in to do an investigation about the organizational shortfalls or concerns or problems in the Department, it seems rather ironic that we would not want to have on the Board at least somebody who knows the field. We have well-meaning people who are concerned, but observing over the last twelve years and especially over the last year and a half, the Board, it's easier to teach somebody outcome-based managing than it is to try to understand and to teach them what it means to go out and deal with some of the most difficult situations in our town. Outcome-based management, from an industrial point of view, may work well with widgets, but not with children who are have very serious problems at home, with adults that we have in our community, our citizens that we represent from a variety of districts in town. So it's not to say that our nominee doesn't have good skills. The question is, what skills are needed by this Board? So I'm voting or asking that she not be approved. I feel that we really need to take seriously the appointments process because this is the way it was explained, the seventh of seven, so that means there's no other opportunity. The frustration also, reflecting from my colleagues, is we scratch our head and say, how come they don't understand the difference between services and programs? How come they don't understand what it is that we do on a regular basis? And that is a concern. And yet the Department of Health has doctors to ask questions about, well, what's the CDC? Well, they know what the CDC is, the Center for Disease Control. That seems obvious, but yet the doctors know that. Not everybody might. So I would encourage you to really take this seriously and give the feedback to the Selectmen that it's just not to fill a slot with somebody who raised their hand and to bring them in online. As the nominee wrote, she's looking forward to helping to implement its agenda and programs. This is not a Junior League activity. This is to really go out and do strategic planning and to really know about our town. And so that's my concern. Thank you.
Lucy Krasner, District Five.
I rise very briefly to say that the chairman of our Appointments Committee always gives outstanding reports, but I think there was an error in this particular case. The one vote was an abstention in our meeting the other night. The vote was eleven zero one. And the one person who abstained abstained not because there was a concern that there were too many financial people on that Board, but rather it was the first meeting she'd ever been to. She did not get the biographical information, and she didn't feel comfortable voting. She then did vote as she was an alternate, taking someone else's place, did vote on the other people that came before us that evening. So just for clarification, I think we all thought she was a very qualified nominee, and I urge you to vote for her.
I'll just comment, just for clarification. When someone abstains, I'm not sure we ought to give more discussion to the reasons for an abstention than for the eleven who voted in favor. Mr. Von Keisel in District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Ms. Taranoyar has a substantial resume in the financial industry, there's no question about it, and she's a charming person. But I will quote from her form, the rest that was not quoted before. This is the nomination form that submitted to get the job. It says, "Please describe any previous experience you have had with this Board, Commission, or Committee." And the quote is, "While I don't have any previous experience with this Board, I look forward to helping implement," et cetera. The one thing that this candidate did say, which impressed our committee and the Appointments Committee, which I'm a member, was that she can help with the outcome-based budgeting that's being imposed by the BET as a pilot program in social services. Now, one of the problems was this interview happened a few weeks before the removal of Ms. Carol Femia, the Commissioner of the Department, as you may have seen in the paper the last couple of days. And that has since taken a change in the condition of this appointment and the situation it resides within. There have been various comments since this removal by our town leadership, which suggests a severe downsizing or even a virtual elimination of Social Services Department. We have a history here, and I'll just go to the facts. Over the last ten years or so, there has been net real-dollar reduction in the budget of Social Services. This department has been shrunk financially. No other town department has suffered that, as far as I'm aware. The first Selectman is now in the process of implementing a merging of the Social Services Department Business Office without of the Health Department through his executive order that we approved last fall and the charter change. Three, there was a comment in the paper by our leadership which stated comparison and basically dismissively with the Commission of Aging, a Department of, not even a Department, excuse me, an agency of three people, which is solely an advocacy office with no product and no statutory responsibilities in comparison to Social Services. There's no comparison to these two operations. It worries me because it shows a lack of understanding of what we're dealing with here. The second, the other item that came up has been, if you may have heard, is a resurrection of the idea of studies to merge Health and Social Services and Commission of Aging. Ten years ago, I was on the Blue Ribbon Commission, which studied that very same question on that merger. And we found, after a lot of research and looking at all the various towns in Connecticut, Fairfield, and West Hartford, and all the other comparables, that there was no synergy between these three Departments. They had separate and completely different missions and purposes and operations, and they would not and could not actively effectively act as a merged Department. It would have been counterproductive for it. So when you talk about removing the Commissioner and the second study we're now involved in without the Commissioner, after the full study we did in the year two thousand and one, which the Board of Estimate mentioned also in the paper, has been largely adhered to and followed. There are some questions always, and can always do better, but it has been largely successful. I would put to you that very few studies of our Department or anything in this town have been fully implemented. The closest thing we've had is the Fire Department, and that still has many things that are not implemented. So here is one that was taken, a study was done fully and objectively without a predetermined purpose of outcome, and it was implemented. And yet we're going to do another one. It sounds like we're shopping for an outcome. Well, the point is, and the question somebody asked, is what this got to do with the candidate? The candidate's coming in as a finance person on outcome-based budgeting. Now, in outcome-based budgeting, as far as I've talked to all the people I know in the industry that I've talked to in town lately since this came up, and it's been rather short, there is no such industry formula in the whole United States, curious, for outcome-based budgeting. Perhaps it's not a formula which is really suitable to this kind of an operation. Do we have out-based budget for art museums, universities? Social services provides an intellectual product, not a tangible product. Therefore, the outcome-based budgeting may be more like playing baseball on a football, by football rules. And therefore, Mrs. Taranoyar's skills, although they may be considerable, are misapplied. And this nomination is more financially driven than it is mission-driven. At least, it's not a social service mission. So I put to you that while Ms. Taranoyar may be a wonderful person, I would follow the suggestion of my fellow from District Eight, my fellow member, that this be turned down and leave room for somebody who has a direct expertise and can enlighten this Board and help to lead it towards its mission. And I think we, as an RTM, should look very carefully at what's happening to the oldest Department of Town, older than Police, older than Board of Ed, older than everything else is the Social Services Department. Why is it felt that this could be outsourced, downsized, dispersed into what's going to become an answering service like Community Answers? Thank you.
Further discussion on item eleven? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eleven and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on item six, which was the appropriation regarding Hamilton Avenue School. Those in favor, this was the amended resolution, those in favor, one sixty-seven; opposed, ten; abstaining, zero. Item six as amended has carried. Item six, the vote is one sixty-seven, ten, zero. Item fourteen now comes before us. Ed Gomo, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, item number fourteen is a substitute resolution resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed for an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and nine. Christopher Holbrook.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item fourteen has been moved and seconded. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Christopher Holbrook is nominated as an to an alternate position of the Historic District Commission. He's stepping down as Chair of the Commission, which is automatically occupied by a regular member, and he has been Chair for three years, the past three years. This rotation method of a Chair moving down to an alternate position is a relatively new practice for this Commission, and the value of the practice is to allow fresh blood into the regular positions while not losing the competency and institutional knowledge of such a person as Chris Holbrook, who is exceptionally well-versed in local, state, and national historic issues. He looks forward to serving as an alternate. The vote on the Commission, I mean, sorry, of our Appointments Committee was twelve zero zero. That said, since the Appointments Committee voted on Christopher Holbrook as a nominee, and this was on March thirty-first, an administrative problem has arrived. As of tonight, it is clear that Chris Holbrook's nomination to the position, to that position, doesn't work because the position is not vacant. You will hear why when we take up item eighteen. If you vote now, Holbrook, on Holbrook, we'll have two people serving one position. At the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to be recognized to propose a motion to solve the problem.
All right. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee met with Mr. Holbrook last Monday evening. We knew nothing of whatever this problem is. It's like, there's an error in the call. The expiration of the term is three thirty-one oh nine. It's correctly stated in the explanos, if that's what you're looking at. Chris Holbrook has, is, as Ms. Jenkins said, is the present Chairman or the immediate past Chairman, I'm not sure which, of this Commission. If he's not any longer the Chairman of the Commission, then Susan Richardson is the new Chair. She's known many of us. He has also served as the Vice Chairman and the Clerk. In other words, he's occupied all of the officer positions in this Commission. His professional career is in historical preservation. He's the President and Director of Restoration of an organization that is restoring Hyde Hall, a national historic landmark in New York State. He's an independent consultant on restoration issues. He's an active Board Member of the Greenwich Historical Society. He is an extremely active person in our town in the historical preservation field, and your solution, I hope, is going to keep him on the Commission. I don't know what it is. His background, he has an undergraduate degree in art history, a master's degree in not-for-profit management. He's very, very highly qualified for this position.
All right. Just so there's no suspense here, the problem is, the person who is being nominated to move up from alternate to member is on our call tonight and was unavailable for interviews, so committees have moved to postpone that nomination. So her spot is not being vacated. Her alternate position is not being vacated, so therefore, he can't take her spot.
Right.
I mean, that's all you're telling me.
It's very simple. They just to move to postpone item fourteen to the June meeting, when hopefully the vacancy has arisen.
Okay. Is that?
Has arisen.
Was that offered on behalf of your committee?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, then we require a second.
Give me a second.
Yes, we do. It has been moved and seconded to postpone item fourteen to our June meeting. Our May meeting being reserved for our annual budget. Discussion on the motion to postpone?
May I also add that?
Ms. Jenkins.
Okay, sorry. That it is, the expiration is two thousand and nine, not two thousand and six, and hopefully that's corrected by June as well.
Well, that was corrected tonight.
That's great.
We had a substitute resolution, so that is what we are acting on right now. Further discussion on the motion to postpone item fourteen? Mr. Edwards, District Eight.
How can you use a legal order if there's not a space that exists? I don't understand that.
When, all right. The individual, as I understand it, is?
Ann Maleta.
The subject of item number eighteen on our call. Ann Maleta is being proposed as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. She's currently an alternate member. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, that is correct. If we postpone item eighteen, which is, which has been proposed by two of our committees, she will remain an alternate member, and there will be no vacancy as an alternate, and so Mr. Holbrook cannot be appointed to that position tonight. cannot be appointed to that position tonight.
Is that withdrawn?
If all this can be acted on together, if we were voting on Item 18 tonight, there would be no problem. We would need, so, Mr. Holbrook continues as a member of the Historic District Commission until we take further action. So, it is entirely appropriate to postpone this until June. Further discussion on the motion to postpone? Mr. Tuthill, District Three.
I have a question, Mr. Moderator. If we postpone this item, it comes up at the beginning of the meeting, and in which case, we'll be voting on Mr. Holbrook at the June meeting prior to the vote on the other nominee.
Let's not worry about that, Mr. Tuthill. See, both items will be postponed. They could be taken care of simultaneously on our consent calendar. We'll take care of it at the appropriate time. Further discussion on the motion to postpone Item 14 to our June meeting?
Question.
All right. I will call for a voice vote, this being a procedural matter. If you want to put this off until June, you should vote in favor of this. All those in favor of Ms. Jenkins' motion to postpone Item 14 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. That item will come before us in June. That brings us to Item 17. Mr. Gomo with that resolution.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, Item Number 17 resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2008, Eris Christ.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 17 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Jenkins with the report of the Appointments Committee.
Eris Christ is a new nominee to the Historic District Commission. He's an architect, which is a highly desirable skill set for the Commission. During our interview with him, we learned that 95% of Mr. Chris's clients come from Greenwich. We asked about a potential conflict of interest, and Mr. Chris responded that his private architectural practice would not derive financial gain from his service on the Commission. Mr. Chris did assure us that, in both spheres of private practice and Commission work, he looks forward to promoting historic preservation, which, in both cases, is done in the best interest of the town of Greenwich. He closed by reminding us, all preservation is local. Our vote is 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee was unable to meet with Mr. Christ last week and unable to meet with him this evening. He was unavailable on either evening. However, he has assured us that he is available for the Land Use Committee meeting ahead of the June RTM meeting, and we therefore move the postponement of this item until the June meeting.
All right. That being a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone Item 17 to our June meeting? Once again, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing Item 17 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. I have the results of the vote on Item 11, which was the nomination of Ms. Terranoir as a member of the Board of Social Services. Those in favor, 118; opposed, 56; abstaining, five. That item has carried. Brings us to Item 18. Mr. Gomo.
Mr. Moderator, RTM members, Item Number 18 is a substitute resolution resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2008, Ann Maleta.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 18 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Jenkins.
Ann Maleta was not available for interviews by the Appointment Committee on either of two dates, March 29th and 30th. In all fairness, we had very little time, or little notice, in trying to do all of the interviews for you by this meeting. So, more lead time would be beneficial to our committee, but also, as a matter of politeness, to the nominees. The Committee looks forward to finding a mutually agreeable time for an interview with Ann Maleta prior to the June meeting. Thus, we recommend this item be postponed until June.
Okay. Mr. Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee also was unable to meet with Ms. Maleta, and we too would offer a motion to postpone to June, but we defer to the Appointments Committee's motion.
Well, since you're standing, you're the last man standing, we'll take your motion.
I move that this item, Item 18, be postponed to the June meeting.
All right. Once again, having been offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. All those in favor, so, currently before us is a motion to postpone Item 18 to our June meeting. All those in favor of postponing Item 18 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. That brings us to, well, Item 19, as you know, has been withdrawn, and the final item on our agenda is Item 21. May I ask, if someone could bring me the speaker sign-up list that were outside the auditorium, please? I would greatly appreciate that. Who is offering this on behalf of petitioners? Dr. Carlson, District One.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I give the following. The Greenwich RTM supports continuation of town ownership and governance of the Nathaniel Witherell Nursing Home. This sense of the meeting resolution amends and corrects the proposal on Nathaniel Witherell that came before the RTM in September 2004.
Okay. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution on Item 21? Resolution on Item 21 has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator and fellow members, we had 11 districts present in voting last Monday when we took up this item. We were missing District Three. We didn't have anybody to help us on the discussion of this item, to understand its merits and to answer our questions. We are questioning the timing of this. There are a number of studies that we've asked for be completed and don't have the findings of those. We did understand that the Legislative and Rules Committee was going to be offering a motion to postpone this item. We chose not to take that item or that direction. We would like to get those reports of fundraising and governance that we've asked for to be submitted to the RTM for our deliberations and feel broadly that we should not be confusing their direction as the new Board of Nathaniel Witherell on this item. We voted against this item, 011-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda DeCipe with the report of the Health and Human Services Committee.
This item was assigned to the Committee, but no one appeared before the Committee in support of it. However, three of the members present had signed the petition, so we had a lively discussion anyway. The principal reasons in favor of the petition seem to be concern about the financial survival of Witherell if converted to a 501(c)(3) and the consequent loss of an important safety net for town residents whose health fails in their later years. Views expressed by the majority included, A, Witherell converted to a 501(c)(3) will have a better chance of rationalizing its operations, competing successfully and surviving than as a town department. B, the preference for town residents will be unchanged. And C, town oversight will be just as effective, but without the limitations of the appropriations process. And D, the petitioner's proposal preempts the work being done by the Board to carry out the sense of the meeting resolution approved in September. A motion to postpone the item until the Board's studies are completed and reported in September or October failed to carry on a vote of 3/8/0 with one district absent. The vote on the item as presented also failed by the same vote. Voting in favor were Districts 1, 3, and 8. Districts 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 12 voted against. District 11 was absent.
Thank you. Mr. Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, our Committee took this matter up last Monday evening. This sense of the meeting resolution, which comes to the RTM by way of a petition of Greenwich voters, was taken up by our Committee. No one appeared at our Committee to serve as proponent, however. Stephen Solar, RTM Member from District Eight and a Member of the Special Committee, spoke in opposition. Mr. Solar's opposition was based on his concern that the RTM would be sending the wrong message at a critical time by way of a vote on this issue, because there is currently an effort to determine how much financial support might be available from private donors. Publicity concerning this resolution might dampen enthusiasm for pledges at this point. Members of our Committee, while there were certainly some members who felt that this was, they were in favor of this resolution, they thought that a vote on this resolution was premature, inasmuch as the RTM is awaiting results of the Board's efforts in developing a business plan and to obtain the results of the financial feasibility study. We all felt that we could provide a more informed decision about governance once we learned more about the Witherell business plan and the feasibility of raising some $15 million for the construction of a new facility. It was reported that the financial feasibility study would not be available until June. We therefore thought that postponing this matter until October would give us the opportunity to have one RTM meeting in September to digest that information and then have this resolution come back to us for consideration in October. It was then moved to postpone this item to the October meeting. Our vote on the motion to postpone to October meeting was 11-0-0, District 10 absent.
Thank you. I'll take that up after we finish the Committee reports. Mr. Butel, please state your point of information.
My point is, did the Legislative and Rules Committee vote on whether the motion itself is in legal order?
Mr. Wells? Did everyone hear that?
Yeah, I did hear that. The question was whether or not we voted as to whether or not the resolution was in legal order. We did not take that matter up.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Richardson, you have a...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Please state your point of order.
I object to the raising of the item. That's a specific motion under Robert's rules. Now, I realize...
I'm sorry. You object to raising what?
The raising of the item.
The petitioner's sense of the meeting resolution?
Correct.
For what reason?
That I believe the resolution is not in legal order, as we can neither amend or correct prior action of the RTM. It amounts to a motion to reconsider, which is only allowed to happen at the following meeting. Unfortunately, the petitioner's used the language amend and correct, and I would suggest that that makes the motion not in legal order.
Well, it is not true that we cannot rescind an action that we have taken. You are correct that there are limits on a motion to reconsider, but that is not what this is. We are not dealing with the entirety of the sense of the meeting resolution that we acted on in September, offered by the Special Committee. This, as I read it, first of all, it's a sense of the meeting resolution.
As was the original, right?
That's correct. And it states a fairly black-and-white proposition here, and it is my ruling that there is nothing to prevent the RTM from making that statement at this meeting, if it so desires, or rejecting that statement. So, whether it is artfully drafted or not, it is a petition that has legally and properly been placed upon the call, having been supported by at least 20 registered voters, and it is now ours to dispose of as we see fit. You can always appeal a ruling of the Chair, but my ruling is that this is in order, and we can proceed with it tonight. So, I will rule that your point of order is not well-taken. All right. Mr. Richardson, the report of the Special Committee on Nathaniel Witherell.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, at its regular meeting on March 29th, the Special Committee took up Item 21 as part of its agenda. Dr. Carlson, who filed the petition, was unable to attend our meeting because he had to attend a meeting of the Appointments Committee, which was occurring at the same time. Nonetheless, he had called me two days before our meeting, and we had had an extended discussion in which he expressed the concern that Nathaniel Witherell, if spun off from the town as a 501(c)(3), would fail financially most likely in less than 10 years, and therefore, would be unable to serve the needs of the infirm elderly in our community. He suggested that our town subsidize the existing town department and to generate funds for this purpose by making cuts elsewhere in municipal government. The Committee discussed the petition, particularly the absence of substantive support for it by way of any documentation or rationale other than what I was able to report to the Committee based on my conversation with Dr. Carlson. At the same time, the Committee appreciates very much the concerns which motivate the petitioners. They are the same concerns which motivated and inspired the Special Committee to extend its study to try to solve the problem that is currently Nathaniel Witherell. We too are concerned with the well-being of our elderly residents, especially those who become infirm and will need a place to take care of them. Our Nathaniel Witherell serves part of our community, but we still need it very much. The sense of the Committee overall is that the Special Committee had submitted to this body a comprehensive sense of the meeting resolution in September, which was backed up by a comprehensive report following a comprehensive study, all of which the Committee is pleased to affirm in its entirety, and did so on March 29th by a vote on this item of none in favor, 13 against, and one absent. Mrs. McNamie. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, we move to postpone this item to the October meeting, based on the reasons I provided in my report.
Thank you. I cannot accept that motion because it is not in legal order pursuant to Robert's rules. Let me just read you from Section 14. This is the version of Robert's rules that we go by, the most recent edition, 10th edition. "The subsidiary motion to postpone to a certain time is the motion by which action on a pending question can be put off within the limits, to a definite day, meeting, or hour, or until after a certain event." Now, as to what the limits are, "In a case where more than a quarterly time interval will elapse between meetings, a question cannot be postponed beyond the end of the present session." Now, that doesn't apply to us. We have a meeting within a quarterly time interval. We have a meeting in May, and we have a meeting in June. "In cases where no more than a quarterly time interval will elapse between sessions, a question can be postponed until, but not beyond, the next regular business session." Now, literally, that means we can't postpone beyond our May meeting, but our May meeting is reserved for our budget, and so, I exercise my discretion in accepting motions to postpone items tonight to our June meeting. We're now talking about jumping four meetings into the future in excess of six months. Now, you heard the discussion with Mr. Butel earlier, that there are some prohibitions and limitations on how we go about rescinding actions or votes that we have taken previously. and limitations on how we go about rescinding actions or votes that we have taken previously. That's a long time for us to hold this item in abeyance, and if we were to postpone such a long period of time, and in the interval, some action was required, arguably, there could be a problem acting on a related kind of motion under the argument that we've already voted to not to take this up again until October. So I am going to follow Robert's rules and not accept this motion to postpone until October, recognizing that getting this, if we act on this tonight, there are other procedural devices that we could address to this resolution. There is a motion to postpone indefinitely, which is not a postponement. It is a procedural device to kill the item at the meeting without, and what it effectively does is reverse the yays and the nays. If you are against this and don't want to support this tonight, if a motion to postpone indefinitely were offered, you would vote in favor of that motion, which would have the effect of killing the item tonight. But we would, or we could simply vote it down on the merits, and if anyone has any other ideas, I will consider those, but we would be free down the road to take this up when it was appropriate, and if October was the appropriate time, then the supporters could put it back on our call as they did for tonight's meeting. So for that reason, Mr. Wells, I will not accept the committee's motion to postpone Item 21 to the October meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I have a motion that I would ask you to consider, and that is a motion to suspend the rules on this issue so that the item can be put on the October call.
Having said my piece, you're aware of the issues, I will, I will accept that motion. This is, is there a second? There was a second, okay. So it has now been moved and seconded to suspend the prohibition in Robert's rules of postponing a matter beyond the next meeting, which would allow us then to take up the motion to postpone to October. Now, the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, it is not amendable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So we will not hear further debate on this, but let's understand what we are voting on. If you want to get rid of this prohibition that I described so that we can act on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone, you should vote in favor of the motion to suspend the rules. If you do not want to do that, you should vote against it, which means we would then continue dealing with Item 21 and would not take up the motion to postpone to October. All right, I will call for a voice vote on this.
We have a record vote?
Yes. All right. We will have a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Motion to suspend the rules regarding, motion to postpone Item 21. Please understand, you are not voting on a postponement, you're voting on whether we can take up the motion to postpone essentially. Is everyone clear? Mr. Laurie?
Repeat the effect of a yea or a nay on this motion so that everybody understands-
All right. The question was, could I repeat the effect of a yea or a nay vote? If, if you vote, well, let's put it this way. If there is a two-thirds majority in favor of this motion to suspend the rules, we will then consider the motion to postpone. If there is not a two-thirds majority, we will not consider the motion to postpone to October and will continue with Item 21 and dispose of it in some manner or other. All right? And we'll need, of course, the result of this vote before we can continue further, so I ask that the district chairs please expedite the polling of their delegation.
until the receipt of, you know, the financials? That's not the kind of action they should be doing.
Uh-huh. I mean, that's an indefinite, that's got no time served. So, no, that's not allowed.
When you said it, I just wondered if that was a sort of thing that happened.
You mean postpone indefinitely?
No, no, no. To postpone until the receipt of the financial reports, you know.
The motion has to have a date served.
Okay.
You know, you can refer, which gives it a more indefinite.
All right, I have the results of the vote on Mr. Wells' motion to suspend the rules. Those in favor, 101; opposed, 67; abstaining, 3. That gives us a total of 168 voting yea or nay. We ignore abstentions. Two-thirds of 168 is 112, so 101 is not a two-thirds majority. That motion has failed. Item 21 is before us. Discussion on Item 21. Stephen Solar, District Eight.
Vice Chair of District Eight, please.
Could you please come forward, Mr. Solar?
Last Thursday, District Eight brought this matter up in our meeting. We voted to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely. As the vice chair, I'm making the motion in front of the RTM to do that. The chair voted against the motion and did not want to be here to make the motion.
Okay. Since that is offered on behalf of one of our districts, it does not require a second. It is in order, so we will now consider the motion to postpone Item 21 indefinitely. That is a motion to, in essence, kill the item tonight. Discussion on that motion? All right. Mr. Von Keiseling?
That's when you want to kick yourself.
Mr. Von Keiseling, I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
I'd just say that I am in favor of town governance of Nathaniel Withersall, but I will support this motion.
All right, further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Mr. Brady, District Five.
Usually, this is Mr. Butel's slot. The, we have, we have before us a clear, I think, clear decision. We have had no additional information presented to us concerning this item. We are simply asked to correct something we did last September. I believe the RTM knew what it was doing last December and that there is nothing to correct, and that I think we should, in fact, take the action tonight and not correct what we did last September, and therefore I urge you to not support the motion to postpone indefinitely, but rather we take up Item 21 tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Do you want to be quiet, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Crowell, District Eight.
Maybe you could clarify for us the difference tonight, if this motion was postponed indefinitely, in other words, if there's prejudice surrounding that, or if we take this item up and the item is either voted up or down, or if it is in fact voted down, what the prejudice would carry with that decision, or the difference of the two?
Do you understand the question?
I do. It's a good question. My understanding is that the motion to postpone indefinitely, in essence, kills it tonight without, essentially without prejudice. If we vote on the merits, then we're making a statement that this is how we feel about the governance issue. Okay? Further discussion on the motion, on the District Eight motion to postpone Item 21 indefinitely. Mr. Bazalovsky, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM guests, I vote, I rise to ask you to support the motion to postpone indefinitely for the following reason. When the whole process began more than two years ago, it was motivated, just to remind you about the fact that this body was uncomfortable in the way it was being asked to make decisions with respect to Nathaniel Withersall on the basis of insufficient information. In that context, the moderator appointed a special committee, which over the course, under the able leadership of Mr. Richardson, over the course of a two-year period, spent countless hours to examine almost every aspect of the Withersall situation. When the decision was made, or the recommendation was made last fall, it was a conditional recommendation. It required certain actions of the Nathaniel Withersall Board. It required certain further studies to be done. It made a recommendation, but at the time, it also said that this was a recommendation that was one of three possibilities, which were, all three of them were extensively, if you'll remember, debated. And basically, the decision, the final decision, as to what was to be done with Withersall and how it was to be approached, was deferred until the following, until the additional information was generated that would enable this body to make an informed decision, one way or the other. Remember, we had three choices. One was to simply terminate it altogether, get out of the business. One was to keep it as a town department, and one, which was the recommendation of the Special Committee, was to essentially devolve the governance of Withersall into a 501(c)(3) private body, okay? And that's the recommendation that was made. The problem with this particular item, as I see it, is that it makes a decision or forces this body to make a decision at this point in time with respect to one of those courses of action on what I believe is to be insufficient information, even by the terms of the Special Committee. We all have our own opinions, which way it might go, but frankly, I would like to make up my mind on the basis of as much information as possible, and I would recommend that you would probably want to do so too. I think this particular, it's unfortunate that this particular resolution was put up at this point in time because, as was mentioned by Mr. Wells and others, I think it's premature. Furthermore, if you take a decision on this point now, in point of fact, in a certain sense, you are taking all of the effort that was done by the Special Committee and basically disregarding it because the Special Committee's recommendation was conditional, and you're going to take one position, one way or the other, on a course of action in advance of the receipt of all of that information, which the Special Committee itself asked or recommended be obtained. So I frankly, I'm not prepared to take a vote on this issue, one way or the other, and it's unfortunate that we've gotten tangled up in our procedural underwear, that we are in this sort of, kind of a conundrum of having to deal with it as a motion to postpone indefinitely. However, the comment from our district and why we suggested that it be a postponement of indefinite, an indefinite postponement was because we were particularly concerned that if this motion was voted down, that in effect, this body was taking a position, and the position was that it should not be a town department. Alternatively, it also leaves open the question of what in fact it is or what it will be, and frankly, even I think Mr. Richardson would agree, that in advance of receiving all of the, for example, the business plan itself and the feasibility study on private fundraising, whether the alternatives that the Special Committee recommended, which is the devolving of the governance into a private body, is in fact feasible. If it turns out that the business plan or the feasibility study does not permit that kind of a result, then this body is going to have to make other determinations as to what's going to happen, including possibly- what's going to happen, including possibly shutting it down, or alternatively, actually keeping it on as a town department and subsidizing it. But that's a decision that you should make on the basis of all the information available to you, and I think at this point in time, this is a premature motion. So without judging it one way or the other, I think we really ought to wait until we get these reports, and therefore, I believe a postponement to an indefinite period is the appropriate way, because it does not prejudge the situation, it doesn't prejudice, one way or the other, the arguments, and it leaves it open for this body to make a considered judgment on the issue. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District 8 motion to postpone Item 21 indefinitely. Is there anyone who signed up who would like to speak? Okay. I'll call for a voice vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. -
A question and tally vote, please.
Okay, we'll take a recorded vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District 8, motion to postpone Item 21 indefinitely. We will once again await the result of that vote before we can proceed further. We have the result of the vote on District 8's motion to postpone Item 21 indefinitely. Those in favor, 141; opposed, 21; abstaining, 0 that item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.